I will call the meeting in order. We try for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the government, to our citizens, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we got a busy morning at Norman. Thor is, uh... Where are you at, out east?
Yeah, I'm in New Hampshire this morning.
Yep, so he's joining us. Uh, so, uh...
I can hear you guys, but I can't see anything. I'm not sure what the issue is. I had it yesterday.
First thing on the agenda will be adoption of two budgets. One will be the county budget, and the second one would be solid waste budget. So, uh, members, we've had discussions. We had a public hearing last month on the county budget. Have not heard any questions or anything. Have you, Tiffany? Has anything changed in the budget? No, nothing's been changed in the budget since we last worked, worked on it.
I'm gonna start with solid waste, sort of having that.
I wanna, I wanna start with.
For the ordinance number bay twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
Questions, comments on the motion?
As long as the auditor satisfied with the order done, then I'm good with it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make it out of motion.
I'll say.
My motion adopt the twenty twenty-four day fourteen.
And I'll say.
That's been seconded by me. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. I'll ask for the question. John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Y'all, and I'm a yes. Passes unanimously. Next will be the solid waste budget. Any questions? Thor is on that board, so do you have any questions? Make the motion we approve. Motion by John that we approve. There's a second. Second by Nick. Further discussion? Again, we'll take a roll call vote. I'll look for the question. John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we have salary ordinance.
That'd be twenty twenty-four dash sixteen.
Motion to approve is presented twenty twenty-four sixteen.
Motion by Thor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? A call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That passes. Okay, we're gonna change the order just a little bit. Uh, we have Andy Boxberger. Today, you're representing Terrebausco EDC, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And they're asking for an appointment. Uh, do you want to explain a little bit?
Yeah.
Andy?
So, um, there's a new residential development, uh, in Terrebausco, uh, called Turtle Meadows. They were granted an infrastructure, a low-interest infrastructure loan from Indiana Finance Authority. It's a new program they have to help put in their infrastructure. And so how that loan is given is that the town needs to form an EDC, which they're in process of doing. And then the EDC issues a bond that's purchased by the Indiana Finance Authority. And it's loaned to the developer at a low interest rate. There's no liability to the town, the county, anyone. The, um, the developers are required to put up a letter of credit in case they default on the loan. That's, that'll protect, uh, the town from any liability, um, for the loan. So there's, there's, and then they're paying all the costs and everything associated. So the town just needs to have the EDC to issue the bond, um, and then the developer takes on all the liability. The statute states that the EDC is, there's three members. One's appointed by town council, one's appointed by the town council president, and one's appointed by county council. So they just need you all to appoint the EDC board member.
Okay, and that, that can be, doesn't have to be a council person.
There's no, the statute doesn't have any requirements to those parameters for the board member.
Any other questions, Brian?
Dale, I guess, for Jews, does this affect the county's EDC in any way?
Different kind of EDC, right, Andy?
This is the, this is not an economic, they're an economic development corporation.
Yeah.
This is an economic development commission.
Commission.
Uh, the county has actually done this for, for the Itron bonds.
Yeah, okay.
It's called. Yeah, we have like John LaFever and Brian Emmerich, and I forget who our thirds is.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I didn't take anything away from the county, right? End up.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a single purpose. The only reason to be informed is to issue this bond.
Okay.
There'll probably be a couple meetings.
Good question, Tom. Any other questions? I know I had talked to John last week and...
After conversations with several individuals in the Terrebausco area who adamantly refused. Had a conversation with Miles Wilson, and I will submit his name as our representative.
And his, you, you had given, earlier, you'd given his background, but...
He is, uh, owner of Sheets and Childs Sugar Home. So he's been very active in territorial downtown projects and things like this on it. And he has, my conversation with him, he has accepted it, and then also put a name in as for our representative.
So is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Kim. What's his name again? Miles?
Miles Wilson.
Miles Wilson as our representative to the EDC, uh, for this project. Any further discussion or questions? I'll call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passed.
Thank you.
Passed. Maybe we saved them some money.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott Wagner.
I'm not here asking for any money. In June of this year, the commissioners formed a educational health fund in preparation to receive monies from the Merrick or, uh, group for an intern. In the meantime, Darcy went out, applied to the, um, Old Settlers Foundation and received a grant, uh, fifteen hundred dollars for QPR education. If you don't know what that means, question, straight refer for suicide prevention. She was a trainer on that, and she goes out to deliver those talks to any organization that's interested in that. And she's purchasing books for that, because that would be a cost to the county otherwise. So we need to appropriate that fifteen hundred dollars into the Health Education Fund so that we can now start.
Kim, you want to say anything? You're president of Old Settlers.
No, I did. I felt like it was a good a good way to show that Old Settlers is here to support well accounting and the things that we give and well give. I think I was good. That being said, I make a motion that we approve. Let him move that over.
Okay, I have a motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Joan. On the fifteen hundred dollar request just to transfer. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Joan? Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passed.
They're interviewing today for a candidate for that interposition, so hopefully they'll have some of that program running there in the county. And they'll be doing a high level in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Are you leaving?
I can come back if you'd like.
Well, just update on COVID or anything?
So the weekly report we get from part view from Dr. Seninger, uh, our COVID is on the down slide from mid-August. It's declining, although I hear people who have it and get it pretty fairly severe, but they're not being hospitalized. Flu at this time is almost non-existent. So I don't know what will happen with that. The shots are available in April. But right now, there, there's lots of things that we see, and I hate to say too much to get people nervous. But yes, COVID is on the down line right now. Uh, we are getting small amounts of the vaccine. It's not coming in in floods, right? Nothing else out there on the drive, and we should be worried about just typical respiratory illness this time of year. Uh, fireworks out in the fields, getting a lot of dust everywhere, so allergies is really high.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the update. You know?
I was asking for the additional preparation of thirty-three thousand, paying my portion of the radios that were installed in the new jail.
We had approved this before, right? So...
A motion that we, it was a transfer, wasn't it?
To just want to appropriate the monies.
Okay, yeah, I motion that we appropriate the thirty-three thousand.
Okay, a motion by Nick that we approve and appropriate to thirty-three thousand. There's a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Discussion? During none, I'll call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just to, I can speak on a different. For the ARPA additional, um, when they made the budget, they did not appropriate all of the monies as those requested by council. They kind of wanted to pull it back to be able to approve projects as they planned. So this is bringing us up to basically a zero balance. We still have money in the accounts. This is, or in the fund, but this is cleaning up the account. This is after the insurance over that you approved, eight hundred thirty thousand. There's those other payments. Um, so this will bring us to zero for now. And if any more is spent, they will have to come to three years again, which I'm assuming they will with courthouse and... Next.
Sure. Oh, has this been on, Kami?
The insurance, and there's been some, like, one-offs with the courthouse. It's just, it's only the approved, um, resolution, or the resolutions that you have approved thus far.
Okay. Any additional questions, Kami or Tiffany?
I'm just assuming it'll be notated that those are the ARPA funds being absorbed into County General, and they won't forget that.
This was, you're paying for the insurance, and their, the monies went back into their insurance line item, that whole roll back in the County General.
Your pleasure.
I'll wait to motion. Take some of the ARPA.
But Tom makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kim. Any further discussion, questions? During none, I'll call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Cindy?
Can we read?
More than one.
Where to start? Okay. A few years ago, um, an attorney that represented a credit card company filed a suit against an individual. Well, then the judge ordered this person's, um, it was a garnishment order, um, order. So I found out in two thousand twenty-three, the end of two thousand twenty-three, that the funds went to a wrong attorney. Now, this attorney is from out of state. It's not local. It's not in the state of Indiana. It's in Illinois. I have literally been trying for ten months to get this money back. It's a total of three hundred eleven dollars thirteen cents. I have money in my budget to pay this, and at this point, the rightful attorney has contacted me, and they want their money. And I've been able to hold them off since last December, but I need to get them paid. I contacted State Board of Accounts, and they said that it could either go out of unappropriated funds or it could go out of my budget, but I would have to get an okay for you. I already have money in my budget under bank service fees, so I could pay that out of that fund. But I have to get permission from you all. I went in front of the commissioners yesterday and the attorney, and it, it wasn't really, um, cost friendly to be able to go through the county attorney. So, um, at this point, I just need your approval to be able to get them paid. I'm gonna still keep trying to, to recoup that money. Um, I'm just kind of, I don't understand why it's been so hard to get this money back, so, but I'll just keep trying.
Is this something you'd go through small claims law?
Well, I could, but I would need the county attorney.
Probably cost more.
It would.
It's like, oh.
For three hundred dollars.
Yeah. I have a few more ideas of maybe how I'm gonna try to do this, but I just wait, no, I have been trying since December to get this back. And now I can't hold off the rightful attorney, so I need to get them paid.
What's the other attorney saying? The one that shouldn't have gotten paid?
It's in Illinois, and the name of the firm is Blitzen Gates.
Have they said anything to you at all?
Well...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, one of them, one of them said that they sent it, and at one time they did send it, but they put no name on it. And we get thousands of checks, and something comes through, and we don't have a name, we don't have a cause number. We have to return it, because we would have no way knowing where those go. So now trying to get it back has been the problem.
Take a motion here, approve the extension. Who's it?
Of her budget?
Of her budget. That's what she's requesting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by John, a second by Kim, that we approve Cindy to go ahead and pay this. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Thor.
Um, is there any more, Cindy, is there any more background on how this got paid to the wrong attorney? I know you said it got paid to the wrong attorney, but how does that happen?
Well, first of all, when the case is set up, we put in an attorney, and there's attorney code. Um, we don't know at this point if it was transposed, the attorney number, or, you know, sometimes there'll be an attorney, but then they withdraw. And then there's a new attorney. And it used to be that those were sent to the courts, and if we don't get that information, we can't fix the financial. So we're still trying to figure this out. I mean, I, we, this hasn't, as far as I know, I've been there twenty-eight years, and I haven't seen this before. So, you know, I mean, I've talked to everybody, you know, we try to double check our work, but, you know, mistakes are gonna happen. You know, I'm not the only office. I mean, mistakes are gonna happen. We just try to do our best.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my thing is I, I don't want to see us spend four, and I think that's probably what the commissioner is saying, spend more money than this.
I know, yeah.
To bite it, so I'm, I'm okay. Okay, I got a motion.
Well, imagine, I don't imagine they're gonna be real motivated to send it back to us when they've already sent it to us once. That's probably where they're at.
Exactly.
Said they've already sent it to us once, they probably won't be.
Well, you have, like I say, we get, we get hundreds of checks a week, and if they don't identify it, we, we just can't randomly put it, you know, and just think this is where it goes, so... No, that's just our procedure. We send it back, ask it for identification. That way, with State Board of Accounts audit us, and they ask for our steps. We can say, see this, they told this port to go toward this account, so...
Okay. Call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Joan? Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Good morning, council. Morning. I brought along Brad on here. He was head mechanic for the county heavy department. Is there's any, yes, more questions you have during this discussion? Probably had a chance to review the document that was in your packet, but just to have a recap. I have an apartment equipment seems to have been, reflect, better term neglected, passed. That gave, probably. We've got a few pieces of equipment up there unsafe to use right now. But pick up trucks, the unit thirty-four randomly shuts off, and it's got manual smokes.
Uh, swallow for two hundred thousand.
So that's, uh, we use that for mowing tractors, shuttle drivers to those tractors as a fuel tank, air compressor, filters and such on the tractor. Or we'd like to replace that. Truck thirty-three has been rebuilt once.
Uh, it's had a bed put on it. Um, I don't know if it's been rebuilt motor-wise. It's got some pretty sad shape, holes in floorboard. What's ringing?
Rings, whatever else. Uh, the main concern right now, we've, we've had discussions with the commissioners is the price increases that we're going to see here in the next year or two years. As you can see, from this year, you know, mile year twenty-four, mile year twenty-five, trucks have just gone up eighty-five hundred dollars for the truck and the body. Then next year, for twenty twenty-six, we're going to, you can see that with the, uh, estimates that you've received, that, uh, the mission's coming out thanks to mission controls, the engine itself is all going to have to treat with that box. It's, it's added to clean the exhaust, and I added another twenty-three thousand dollars to the price of these trucks. On the second page, I, I did realize this is a lot to ask, that it is in the, uh, in effect, the same seventy thousand dollars in the next couple of years, if you're able to purchase trucks early. That list at the top of page two, that you could dump two single axles, you can do, and the pickup trucks, you know, hundred fifty thousand for pickup trucks. Need at least two to replace, or a little van. The mowing truck could be replaced with something used. It'll have to be anything big, you think a half ton can do it?
Half ton, two-wheel drive, just something simple. All it does is transport the, uh, operators and the fuel and the air compressor.
At most stations, you can see the estimated pricing and the assumption that the, uh, increase in the budget for the department twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, every those moves that.
Do you have to take the, uh, trucks anywhere and complete them for use, like you had to with the tractor?
They purchase a cabin chassis dealership, uh, Western Star, International, or Kenworth or Molo. And then that cabin chassis is delivered to body equipment companies, such as HWA Jones, that's for body blade and mowing after our potential program to make usable for us for what we needed to do.
Okay, and that's all included in your quote?
Correct.
And the only reason the tractors were sent over to Calida is they are the only factory-trained installers in our area. So it's either them or the tractor that have to be shipped out to Sioux Falls to be actual factory installed.
But I just wanted to open discussion, um, to this, so everybody that's aware, and ultimately, if rest of our place, the little car, I think, a little bit on a better timeline than what we have, I'm doing. Our fear is that, you know, we're, we're due for a, a real winter, any time now. Our future is with these trucks, with the great down, you know, the chances of not being able to prove it was for presidency.
So you will start that process, getting rotation, bring it, a fleet rotation.
We have.
Let's use the example, every five years, I need one single axle, whatever.
And we have, and we have that, it's, the problem is with the pricing, trucks going up. Because the last, the, just twenty fifteen, we got one for two in twenty twenty-three, is that correct?
Two axles. Uh, yeah.
It was a fifty-eight percent increase this year, so. Don't know, we build grocery stores, Harvile. It's got higher than that, unfortunately, I'm taking it for price of these vendors, so. Trying to replace equipment on a schedule with the three hundred thousand, I would legitimately bet for as far back as I can see. So that's why I appreciate the four hundred thousand dollars for next year, and unfortunately, that do a little extra if you're running for equipment, and prices go up in twenty twenty-six, so. This should fill our BTD and get us back to a point where we can get on. This should fill on our B G D and get us back to a point where we can get on better schedule. Twenty twenty six to replace truck a year, then so I may be a little bit left over too. The other, but we need a new windshield for a chipper truck, the moon truck is probably nearing a point where it needs to be replaced and all these are safety related. Big function related as well.
Ryan, you're at three fifty. The trade is thirty one thousand dollars. Why are you trading it in if it's worth thirty one thousand?
That truck, the, the trade value is for a of each side of the single rear wheel. Three fifty, that it's not capable of handling with it, but takes the standard grid spreader. And with dual wheels, you get a lot better traction, a lot more use that truck in some times. It's not sitting this summer because we had to park the mowing track, the work trucks, and it's been used as the mowing truck until it's, well, the season's over. But if we replace it with a dump truck, with our F three fifty dual wheel of the dump bin, you can use all summer for patching with the other items that, that's that it's needed for.
Then I take it you got two or three quotes and this is the cheapest?
Quote, that was just an example that I had on, just an example that we have gotten three quotes. This is just a discussion.
Okay.
Those days, as far as purchasing that, you come back with all the information you need. That quote is not the, not the cheapest, but it's the, okay, once we carry it to least expensive body. It kind of launches.
Okay.
What we need with that truck is hands. Armed, whatever, it's, it's way above the value just because of the way the frame is, cross fingers in the frame. But visibility out we have, just there's many things that we look at over these trucks. That's the Western Star.
Yep.
Vaginability means want to.
Okay.
When we want to buy something that's got to be of quality. I mean, can't be spending good money on single axles and dams.
If I have a question, do we depreciate our vehicles like you would in a business?
Yeah, we have a company that does that for us.
Do you know where we're at on the vehicles that we currently have? Is that something we can find out?
Yeah.
That'd be great. I appreciate that.
So you said you just want this for discussion today, so what kind of an answer? Or what do you want out of us today?
More or less, I'm gonna bring this proposal to you and we do have the money in our N B H account. And I can come back and next month see if we can get appropriated to go ahead with these purchases. Obviously, the purchases won't need to be paid for until, that's earliest, what I believe, next year.
Yeah, we're looking about a year out for a truck. Um, last I heard, but then all as far as their plows and their beds, they're a year out from even having one.
Is, is mine used feasible at all on?
Single axle? Any of it, no. Not on single axle, on pickups possible. But on single axles for what we need, everything's to spec. We build those trucks for what our application is needed for. They do build spec trucks, but a lot of times it's stuff that we will never use. It's overbuilt for what we do. So, and it's more or less showpieces. They take those trucks around to different shows and then at the end of it, they can sell them at a discount. So like single axles, uh, or one ton dumps, a lot of sort of spotty stuff like that, you can buy setting.
I might encourage you guys to get a little creative on, you know, maybe that. Look in, look into that if you can, if we can save a little bit of money. Oh, yeah, if I do something like that, that would, that would be good, Rob, to go, even if it's overbuilt, if we can get it at a discount, then. And that's good for you guys.
We will do that research.
Hey, hey, Rob. Can't see you, Ryan. Trade surgery. Historically, we have, we had a five year equipment plan with the highway department.
Something that, um, Ronnie just started, but to my knowledge, he never did.
I thought, I thought we had a five year.
We should have.
Plan to, to different equipment and, and.
I got one, I, I, we have before the session that.
Now, that's partly why I asked about the depreciation thing, because if we're, if we're on a schedule with our vehicles as far as depreciating, if we get to, you know, if we are on a five year schedule and we get to like year three on that five year schedule, it might be time to say, hey, we need to start appropriating funds to purchase within the next two years.
Normally, normally we are, we are allowed. We, we run them until they're, till they're.
There, there is a threshold though on equipment. Once it gets past a certain point, you're basically dumping money into a pit. And we're to a point where our spare trucks, we have two trucks that have had engines rebuilt at twenty thousand dollars. Those trucks are now nearing thirty eight thousand. So if history service, service is correct, depending on how the trucks were rebuilt, we could potentially be looking at two more engine trucks. If there's piled of scrap with that. Where if we save the truck before it gets completely wore out, we can sell it on gov deals, whatever, set a reserve and get something back out of it as opposed to sending the truck to the metal office or whatever, get rid of it. So that's, that's the other side of it. It's trying to stay ahead of it to where when we are done with it, the truck's still usable, we'll get some kind of a return back out of it as opposed to just scrap. Um, we do it at like thirty three runs great, but it's, it's not a safe truck. It wouldn't pass a D O P inspection. I mean, it's, it's to that point where if something's gonna have to be be moved on our route trucks. Cause our, our route trucks break, they go down, we don't have spare trucks to throw in.
Right.
I just encourage that five year plan. I, I thought we'd have one.
I developed one, it's okay. It's, it has to, it has to be anyone's upgrades.
I would like to see you have these three quotes.
So you just want our okay to go ahead and pursue more quotes and get final figures? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like that. I realize it's a big ask, but upfront, it's gonna, you know, save us sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars over a couple of years. That's what you were saying, I will proceed back to what matter finally used and then we don't start finding use of what we need for review.
You still have use for single axle trucks?
Sorry?
Are you still, you still have use for the single axle?
Yeah.
Well, there's no denying attention to the highway department that on the wayside for the past few years. You gotta have the equipment to do your job. It'd be awful to have a big snowstorm and a truck break.
What's the, what's the worry? I guess, is there any kind of worry just by purchasing, like in your, your third uh, example down here, just by purchasing two chassis there? I mean, is there like a rust worry? Do you, do you worry about any kind of deterioration over however long it's gonna take to mount on?
Are concerned, you know, with that model or that table is trying to avoid purchasing a twenty twenty six model chassis that has that treatment. It, because it's like anything, when the death system came out, it was a mess. Breakdown. People was putting decent fuel on the left hand, and that's kind of been fixed, but we're just concerned that first model here, the new additions, there's gonna be issues. Be a testament for where their new missions box.
Sure.
I find the way you had. Probably tuned it in, I guess you could say.
All right.
I know how rusty it's like deals.
I agree with that.
You need a brochure or just a voice?
Well. We'll have a final decision as prices come in, so I think general consensus is that go ahead and get the prices in.
I just mainly just wanna make sure lines of communication are kept us on the chin. Highway Department, commissioners, and those councils, so appreciate that very much. That's why I wanted to come today and prepare anything for so we'll get, we'll get members in and three quotes. Supposed to. Come back for the next one.
Thor, you guys have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ryan.
I appreciate you got on that, on the old trail out there east. Got that fixed and hopefully. Hopefully it's okay, sorry.
It makes it a little smaller.
I know. Yeah, I appreciate you. I know the people around there. Man, I told my passport on you. Thank, tell me best thanks.
Appreciate it.
Ryan, lately I turned out very, very nice.
I did. Yes. Beautiful. Just, which is a kind of a funny, I'm trying to communicate that through P M A as much as I could.
Your updates on where the work was at was helpful.
Putting in there that it's being a little repaid, so. Still understand why people.
Well, it's not something along.
It does look nice.
And the workers did a really good job, I think, directing the traffic. You didn't have to sit there for.
The sheriff probably be writing more tickets out there because it's kind of a speedway down, so. Yeah.
Ryan give me a sign though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the regional sewer agreement. I don't know. Robert, Teresa, are you guys talking about that?
He just approved it yesterday, so. Nothing really, I'm not sure what's even on here.
Capital still has to approve, even though it's part of the ARPA plan, they still need to.
We approved it, so I guess now it's your turn.
It was a part of the original ARPA plan that was presented way back.
At the beginning, yes.
What area does, does this cover? Okay. Cause down south on fourteen, that's, Wesley, that's all done, right?
Oh, my God.
Yeah. State boy person.
I think it's all.
Questions or comments on this?
Do you know when they start on this?
Well, they're waiting on, uh, grant from the state. And then at that point.
Should I come in July twenty twenty five?
I'm not on that. Chad is on the regional sewer board. That's what Andy said yesterday between July and August, they should know, and if the funds do not come here, the monies will come back to council, be incorporated somewhere else. Is my understanding? Yeah. Hopefully they'll get the fair.
Your pleasure. Council, our commissioners approved it yesterday.
Motion that we approve the agreement.
Knowing that the, uh, grant doesn't come through, then the funding comes back. Correct? Okay, so a motion by Nick, is there a second?
But on that, if it doesn't go through and the money comes back, we'll be past the deadline for attaching.
Um, we'll be able to get out of it because of this agreement.
Okay.
Yep, maybe make sure that it would, we would have just minimal time though to turn around and put it towards something else, but.
Well, there's lots of these trouble.
Yeah.
So I have a motion by Nick, is there a second?
One second.
Second by Joan that we approve the million dollar for the regional water and sewer district for Chair Busco area. Discussion, questions? During that, I call for the vote, John.
I'm saying it could be financially beneficial for me when it comes through.
Okay, Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passes one of his questions. Okay. Next on the list is, uh, you got a schedule of next year's meetings?
We have a motion we approve, meeting schedule as written.
One second.
I have a motion by John. Second by Kim that we approve the two thousand twenty five meeting schedule as presented. Discussion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment, um, like I always do, that I would prefer that we would take a serious look at moving to evening meetings. Um, with that being said, I have nothing else to say on the matter.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? During that, I have a motion. I'll call for the vote, John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That passes. Been a day to have something in. We're proving everything.
We got some minutes. We don't have anything for first committee, but we will have a meeting sometime today.
There are two sets.
Minutes, I think we approved.
The one with the signatures, that'll be signed off on, but we have September fourth and August six.
August sixth, we've all already approved it, just needs signatures?
Um, no, that one was August thirteen.
Oh, was it?
So we still need to approve September fourth and August six.
Okay, we'll take September fourth. Minutes.
I'll make a motion except September fourth minutes.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion by Tom, a second by Thor that we approve September fourth minutes. And for the discussion, I'll call for the vote, John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Next one is August sixth. Okay. We have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by John. There's a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion of protections. All those, uh, call for the vote, John?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We're all kind of caught up on that. And then we have the August thirteenth, just needs signed. That we approved. Commissioners report?
Really, the main thing on our, um, radar, I guess I'll say is the jail ribbon cutting that I think Paul been made aware of on October twenty ninth, three P M, three to seven, actually. So if that's not already on your calendar, then get it on there.
Any questions for the commissioners?
We'll leave you right after.
Yep.
Okay, we did the minutes, any comments from the public?
My name's Christopher Morgan with Blue Eagle Towing, taking over operations of Smith Brothers Towing here in Woodland County. Just wanted to introduce myself to council, honored to provide a path to retirement for Kent Smith, a current owner, operator of Smith Brothers, while continuing legacy that Smith Brothers has built in Woodland County for decades. We're going to keep it, the current staff, um, under employment and look to, to add as we grow the business here. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Welcome, Kenny.
Any other comments from the public? You have any updates on the internet?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just give a real quick one, you know, the state keeps dragging their feet on some of this, which is why we have clearly the, the task force had hoped to have presented something, and I know we want to do something before December thirty-first, especially if there's a request for our, but one of the things the task force, especially Zach's been good about, certainly have wanted to come, um, with a proposal, but it's just not a complete proposal, and so, um, and Joan, you know, we talked about this before as with any of you, that we want a complete solution, we don't leave anybody out, Lakeland looks like they're going to have that, and so we just want to come once with something we'll all like, and it will be comprehensive, so I keep, you know, we're always two weeks away from being two weeks away from an ass, but trust me, we're working on it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Anyone else? John?
I have nothing to add.
Joan? Thor?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nick? Kim?
I have nothing.
Tom?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Meetings adjourned.